Yeah, welcome everyone to the special meeting of the city council. It's 5:15 Wednesday, April 3rd, and we will, the meeting has been called to order. So please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fruein?
Here.
Mayor Mohan?
Okay. Today, the special meeting is a study session, and the subject is the two-year fiscal year 2023-2025 City Work Program. There is a staff presentation, obviously, so let's get going on that.
Thank you, Mayor, for introducing the item. Not a problem. We want to thank council for having the opportunity for us to bring back the two-year work program to council for review. Just one before Assistant City Manager and staff get into the presentation, here's kind of the perimeter, understanding that this is a two-year program, work program, and we're about halfway through. So what we're hoping to do is just through the study session, making sure that we're on the right path, getting to the end of the two-year program before we bring the entire work program back to council next year for the priority and goal-setting retreat. And with also the understanding that we have gone through a lot of outreach with commissions and the community members, wanting to look at this list and then see if there's anything that the community would like to add. So the commissions were asked to look at the unfunded list from last year, and also with the understanding that we have a limited budget to carry out new items, and to see if there's any other new proposal that the council would like to entertain. So with that, I'll turn the presentation to Matt Morley to walk us through tonight's presentation.
Thank you, City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thanks for having us tonight. I'll start us off on the work program, and take you through ultimately to our recommended action, which is to reaffirm and accept the work program with minor modifications, with the acknowledgement that it is a two-year work program, and we're in the middle of that work program. There's a five council goals that guide our work program. The goals include transportation, sustainability and fiscal strategy, quality of life, public engagement, and transparency, and housing. And so we try and put together a work program that aligns with those. And the work program allows us to establish a clear timeline for our work, so we are able to put that forward. And Astrid will talk a little bit about our monitoring efforts in a minute, and what that looks like for us. And then there's several other key elements. We have streamlined the work program so that it is not duplicated in other efforts, so in our CIP or in our operational activities, and that it takes into consideration budget and staff time and availability. So although there may be capacity in one area, there might not be capacity in another. One example is community development right now is really working hard at getting our housing element over the goal line, and so they are impacted in terms of workload. So we have, we take that kind of impact into account as we're developing our recommendations. Ninety percent of our work is our day-to-day work, so stuff that we do as a normal activity. And we reserve about 10% of our time for work program items. So it ultimately is a smaller portion of what we do overall, and we keep that in mind as we look at what we're doing. So there's a lot of things that you might ask about that fall into our operational responsibilities, and we're doing those anyway. So it doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense to track those if we're doing them, and if the council is looking for information on those, we can certainly report out on those items at any time. I'm pleased to say that this check-in was meant to reflect on where we are in our work program, and we are recommending adding a number of projects. There are two staff recommendations, and as the city manager mentioned, we did reach out to the city commissions to see what their insight was on the work program. They provided a list of 25 projects that they thought were viable. Those are listed by commission in Attachment B for your reference. And of those, there's three projects that staff is not recommending move forward at this time. And there are two that we're recommending that we defer for further discussion in the next round, because of their bigger efforts, and that would be in the February timeframe. So that's a mere five projects that sort of didn't make the list, leaving 19 projects that are either added to the work program or recommended for addition, and seven that are in progress or operational, so we're actually addressing them already. So a significant portion of the work that we talked about with commissions is already in progress or in play. So we think that really points to good alignment between what staff is thinking and what commissions are thinking, what the community priorities might be. We are doing a lot of outreach and reporting on the work program, so we're providing quarterly updates. And I'll turn it over to Astrid Robles, our senior management analyst in the city manager's office. Astrid really works the magic behind the work program and the reporting, has all the talent behind making sure the website reflects what we're doing. So we'll turn it over to Astrid to take it from here.
Thank you, Matt. As Matt mentioned, staff has been providing quarterly updates on all of our current work program items to the city council, our most recent update being from the March 19 city council meeting. All of these updates are posted on our city webpage at Cupertino.gov/cityworkprogram. That's where you'll also find a link to our dashboard. The dashboard is updated also on a quarterly basis, and it's a great place to see where we are on current work program items, but also to see the work program as a whole. So definitely recommend visiting that page. This graph here, which is also included in your staff report, illustrates where we are with our current work program. As Matt mentioned, a lot of these have been either completed or are expected to be completed this fiscal year. The remaining 11 projects are currently in progress, and these are projects that have been worked on this fiscal year, and we are anticipating carrying over into next fiscal year. The "not started" section here refers to the projects that were proposed last year but did not receive funding as part of the proposed budget. And all of these items make up the current work program, and this shows in total kind of where we are now. And here's a detailed list of the completed and to-be-completed items that were from the previous graph. Here we see that we have a total of 15 projects that we hope to finish in the first half of the two-year work program, and this really puts us at a good place when we look at next year's work program. So looking at the proposed work program for next year. Staff is primarily focusing our efforts on finishing those ongoing projects. So again, these are projects that are currently being worked on and we anticipate working on into the next fiscal year. I wanted to point out a few of these top priority projects and just refer some of these updates. For example, our tree list update. Staff is currently working on an RFP with the hope of publishing this summer. The public safety license plate readers is a very popular item, and so I wanted to say that staff is currently working on reviewing our updates from the county and is expecting to have an update for the Public Safety Commission later this summer. Updates for the rest of the items can be viewed on the dashboard, so those can all be found there. And here's a list of the items, as Matt mentioned, that we are proposing to add for next year. Each commission was able to review our work program and add items as they proposed to the work program for next year. Though not all projects are being added, the list of all projects can be found on Attachment B. Staff recommends adding these items here, just because they align with current projects that we are working on through other efforts. So starting off here, I did want to speak on each of these items individually. Starting with item 12 here, this art in public and private areas was added from the Arts and Culture Commission. Staff recommends adding this item as there is a need to update our art and lo-fi policy. So that's why we thought this would be a good one to add for next year. Items 13 and 14 were both added by the Bike Ped Commission, and these are projects that we will be working on as part of our Vision Zero efforts, and so we think we should add these as well to the work program. Item 15 here is a poet laureate playbook update was proposed by the Library Commission. Staff recommends adding this item as the last update was made in 2016, so we thought it'd be a good year for us to work on this for fiscal year 2425. Item 16, electrification study, is being proposed by the Sustainability Commission. Staff is recommending adding this item due to some recent cases that would make it important for us to take a look at our current codes. Item 17, recycled water feasibility study, was proposed by Library and Sustainability Commission. This item is actually one of our items that were on hold, and staff also recommends adding it for this year. Item 18, the sign ordinance is an item that we have heard many times by council and community that it's time to update our ordinance, so we would like to propose adding it for next year. Item 19, the rise construction stakeholder engagement is also a project that was on hold from last year. Staff recommends adding this project as the project is ongoing, so we would like to have it on the work program. And item 20, the new bike ped plan, also is a project that was on hold from last year that was recommended by the Teen and Bike Ped Commission to continue into next year. So this brings us to a total of 20 projects that we're proposing. The full list of projects is included in Attachment C. And that really brings us here to today. So here's our timeline that we've been having for this year. So commissions were asked to look at our work program earlier this year, and staff reviewed those work program items, and so we're here today to review really what we're proposing in Attachment C. And we really want to get an idea from council as where the priorities lie and get a full list of what you recommend for next year. Once those priorities are established, we will take a look at those projects and fully create estimated budgets and further details for those items to be considered in May. And so as stated earlier, here's our actions for tonight, and we are here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you to staff, and thank you for an excellent presentation. Let's bring it to council, and we all have five minutes each to ask questions of the staff.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I just did want to remind council before we ask questions and you get into deliberations that we are under the new rules of procedure that council adopted at the last meeting. So just, you know, if you don't use your full five minutes, and would like to continue to have that time available to you later, just remember to reserve the time. That will make it easier for us to keep track of time. So thank you.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, so as I said earlier, everyone gets five minutes to ask questions of the staff. We will start with Councilmember Chow. Five minutes, please.
Since I tend to usually forget to say at the end, so I'll say in the beginning that I'm reserving my entire five minutes unless I say that I will release it later. And my question is that among the new proposed projects, could you give us some idea which ones could be done in-house and which ones would need external consultants? And which ones would need additional cost for implementation in addition to study? Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I don't know that I have detailed answers for you from the cost perspective. As Astrid mentioned, we will follow up based on your direction on which projects should move forward and do some further analysis and costing on them. Of the proposed projects, I'm just going to give you rough numbers. I think roughly half of them will be strictly in-house efforts. Examples might include the art in public and private areas, the poet laureate work. Those kinds of projects will be done by in-house staff. There are a number of others that will require additional assistance, for example, the bike ped plan. The electrification study may all need some outside assistance to deliver the projects.
Since I have additional time, could you just... Sorry. Since I have additional time, could you just give me the whole list, which ones? Or you can share that with us later. Yeah, sorry, I didn't ask that beforehand.
Certainly.
But I hope it's still before the end of the meeting. Thank you.
So you have three minutes and five seconds, Councilmember Chow. Any other questions for the staff? Councilmember Way?
Thank you. So when I look at, thank you for the very comprehensive report. When I look at what you proposed, you're proposing it as you think you can complete all this 20 in 2024, 2025?
That's the intention, yes. Projects don't always align nicely with the fiscal year, so there are times where they may take longer, or where we are looking to get started on a project now, even though it may take us a number of years to complete. There's some big studies in here that might take a little bit longer, depending on how in-depth we go. For instance, the sign ordinance may be a number of discussions, and that will be driven by planning commission and council discussion on the item that may take longer than the next fiscal year to accomplish.
Since of all the 20 projects that you can give us in May, the finance budget to it, unless we add something or delete something, this is what you're looking for today?
Yeah, we're looking for you to identify as a council which projects you're interested in, if you like our list, if you'd like to remove some items from the list or add some to the list. We're here to have that discussion with you. We'll bring forward costs at the budget, so you'll have another crack at the entire list based on the cost of the project.
Okay, that would be in May, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I wanted to make a quick statement. Today's, we are expected to do a sort of a midpoint check-in on items that we have already approved about a year ago. And so my suggestion to all of us is, since we have already had extensive discussions on the projects for the next two years, we should really be looking at minor modifications for this list, because extensive discussion has already taken place. And while we would be sort of willing to add a couple here and take off one or two, in general, unless there's a radical change of circumstances, my suggestion would be to just stay with what we approved a year ago. Thank you, and I have four minutes left.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So with regards to number five, I was hoping that council, in the interest of saving time, that we could have a memo on the expiring BMRs, who are the ones that are timing out, and if you could provide some suggestions about what we could possibly do about that, and where some funding or some kind of implementation of, some plan in order to preserve those, what can we do there? Item three, I'm curious about how we can allow the neighborhood-owned license plate readers in an equitable way. For instance, if we're able to finance six, and then there's a neighborhood who would like to have one installed, but it has an ongoing maintenance cost, we want to make sure that that's going to be fair throughout the city. I did have some sort of general questions about this process. For instance, and I put this into the written communications, so we do have, it looks like we have a $174,000 contract for kind of PR for the city, and that to me seems kind of like a work program item, but I don't know where that, where it originated. And then I was also looking at a contract for, to assist small businesses, and it was only a $20,000 contract. However, it had $400,000 worth of grants associated with it, which would be given to small businesses, and I'm not familiar with that particular project. And so I'd like to understand why that's not considered a work program, and also offline, I'd like to have a memo on that one as well, and the first one I mentioned, the PR contract. So if you could provide some sort of framework for what the dividing line is between what makes it to the work program and what doesn't, I think that would help, especially when I'm looking at these, the special projects. Some of those seem to get into the work program type of arena. So I think just kind of what's our policy, and what is your understanding of the policy directed from council? Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. And last year, we revamped the work program quite a bit, and I think did a nice reset to it to allow it to be a little bit more functional, allow us to make good progress on it. So that was the start of the work program. As I mentioned in my introduction, the council's identified five goals for us to focus on, and we bring forward recommendations for the work program, and then the council also provides recommendations for the work program, as you did last year. And the council, through a discussion, sets that out for us, sets the guidelines. It's a little bit of an iterative process, because there are items that fall in our operational responsibilities on a day-to-day basis, and I think economic development is a good example of that, where we do have a committed effort towards economic development and a special focus on small businesses. So there's quite a bit of day-to-day work, and I talked about the 90% work that happens in that field and many others that we address. So we would, through our iterative process, have that conversation with the council about what in our, from our standpoint, makes sense in the work program and what should be a standalone item. Ultimately, the work program tends to be things that are more of greater interest to the council, so something that you want to see progress in tracking. And so those things tend to float to the top as higher priority, bigger projects, bigger efforts. And that's ultimately where the line is drawn.
And since I still have a little more time, I just want to, you know, total up these two items that I mentioned, and we're at 594,000 between the grants, which I'd like to know about the policy for how those were given out, is that project completed, and the PR, because this does turn out to be a significant spend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fruein?
Thank you very much. Thank you also for the briefing. I thought it was very, very helpful for providing a useful introduction to where we are, where we've been. There's quite a lot that's gotten done in the course of the last year, so I'm really glad that we've refocused where we're headed. There are a few things that spring to mind from the commission proposals that I just wanted to highlight to see if there is room for perhaps including them in existing work that maybe was not otherwise considered. So I draw your attention, for example, to Planning Commission proposal denominated number 14, which is a complete streets ordinance. Is that something that you feel could be incorporated into either the new bike plan work or into Vision Zero?
I'll take that question, Vice Mayor. That's a great question, and I believe we're actually working on that already in either of the document. So we're more than happy to incorporate that. It's either a part of Vision Zero work or the new bike and ped master plan if council decides to continue with that work program.
Okay, would explicit direction from us today be helpful?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then similarly, the Arts and Culture Commission, I know also pre-existing on the work plan but not yet actualized, is a revision of the heart of the city special area. And it seems to me that we're not going to get to that one this year. I had hoped that we would get through the housing element more quickly. I'm assuming that that's the work that's really delaying us getting to that point.
Yeah, I think that's a great observation, and I think it had landed on the unfunded list, and we were tracking it because we had hoped that we could slot it in when the housing element completed. Obviously, we're continuing to work through the housing element today, so that has delayed our capacity to be able to advance that effort.
Got it. It also seems to me that from Planning Commission recommendation 15, which is a small business revitalization ordinance, the spirit of that, from having watched the Planning Commission proceedings there, was to try to find ways to help our small businesses mostly along Stevens Creek Boulevard and Deansa Boulevard, which basically are the heart of the city, in order to overcome some of the challenges that they face. So if there is a way for us to perhaps come up with a strategic plan for helping those businesses, is that something that you think that we could do in this timeframe?
So perhaps, so I think the short answer is yes. Perhaps we can take a cue from Councilmember Moore's ideas and provide you with an off-agenda memo on what we're doing for small businesses and the work that's occurring, because sometimes that happens behind the scenes and is quite active, so that might help to frame it a little bit, and we can provide that, and obviously it'll become available for council and for the public. And then following that, if there are additional ideas or strategies that we want to move forward, or an official plan that we want to put in place.
Got it, okay. And I would assume that something similar would apply to Planning Commission recommendation 16 on simplifying permits.
So I'll take that as well. So this is my fault for not sharing what is going on the day-to-day operation in CDD World. So if council will remember that we actually took an ordinance amendment to you on reducing the processing line for two-story permits. So Ben and his group is also working on a number of also other expedited ordinance revision that's coming to council in the next several months, which kind of fall in line in terms of perhaps reducing the overall processing time. And kind of going along the spirit of the Planning Commission meeting, which I also understood is that there's a desire from the Planning Commission wanting to expedite and perhaps reduce the workload for both staff and also the process for community members. So again, I take that as my cue to work harder and also smarter to make sure that our community and our commission has delivered a message to me loud and clear that we're not satisfied with the current process. So I would take that as instruction from council to me and provide an off-agenda memo to council in terms of what we're doing to make more improvements.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much then, and I think that is all of my questions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Moore. I think you have one minute.
All right. So I'd like to hear more about what this, the complete streets suggestion is for the ordinance. The staff recommendation is to not add this to the city as we already adopted a resolution 18-034 establishing a complete streets policy that is still in effect today. My concern with the complete streets, and I don't know if this is, how true this is, is that some cities have adopted it so strictly that if you were even to want to have your street repaved, that you would need to go to a complete streets model, and that then caused delays. People don't want to even fix the potholes at that point, because it means they're going to have to do all this other work. I don't know if that's true, but it seems like if we're trying to add something like this on, you need to know what the cost is, what the implication is for the city as a whole, especially since we're trying to push off sidewalk improvements and street trimming onto the residence.
Go ahead.
So a quick response in that direction. So the complete streets policy that is in place by resolution is something that we could build on, review, and potentially add in, as the city manager mentioned, to the Vision Zero work plan or future bike ped or active transportation plan. That would mean that we wouldn't necessarily vet it tonight and the components of it tonight, but work with the commission as advisory body, and then back through the council on defining what that means to Cupertino, and providing that definition within the plan.
Okay, ultimately, how much is this going to cost us? Okay, thank you.
I had a couple of questions for staff. Item number 30 is homelessness jobs project, and I think you're not, the staff is not recommending it because of high cost and limited staff capacity. Is that something we can have someone other than the city administer or manage? Like West Valley Community Services is one that comes to mind, but is there value in this project?
If the council is interested in additional service delivery models for that, I think we could reach out to other partners. It may be, it may be an unmet need at this point in the community, but we can look at other ways to deliver that resource and see what's out there and how we can connect it to our community. We're not always first in line because of a number of reasons for those kinds of services, but we're certainly willing to do that outreach.
It will probably make sense, especially if there's no impact to the city's budget. My second question was, the Planning Commission recommended simplifying permits for minor repairs and small projects. Again, is that something that can be incorporated into work that you're already doing?
Yes, and I mentioned that I will provide an off-agenda memo to council explaining the work that CDD is currently working on and what we're hoping to accomplish before the end of this year in this round.
Okay, any other, I have two minutes left, and any other comments? Councilmember Chow?
So I have three minutes and five seconds.
Yes.
So I just want to clarify, I think we had 26 items in our two-year work program, and staff has completed or is going to complete 15 items for the first year. And then there are 11, remaining 11 you are proposing we will do in next year, so that's total 26. And that means we actually have a capacity for maybe four more if we are about like 15 items a year. I thought it was really a great idea, staff, we always... We always, there are always a lot of nice projects we want to do, and it's good that the recommendation last year was, okay, let's be focused. So that's why I ask, so among the new ones that's proposed, my understanding is I think these ones are the ones that can be done in-house. The art in roofie, the speed limit reduction, the poet laureate handbook, the sign ordinance, and the rights engagement. This can be done in-house. Is that about right?
Yes, except for the sign ordinance. I would highly recommend relying on an outside consultant to, again, this depends on the scope of the sign ordinance. And based on the scope of the sign ordinance, I would highly recommend an outside consultant working closely with the outside legal counsel on revising our sign ordinance.
So we are having a very big change on that?
Well, so to answer that question, we've heard anecdotal suggestions from council and members of the community for several different focuses of the sign ordinance. For instance, not to belabor the conversation, what is a freeway-facing sign? How is the sign, what is a window-facing sign? What is a awning-facing sign? So those are in a definition round. And how many signs can a commercial establishment?
I thought these are minor ordinance.
We've also got inquiry about political signs, temporary signs, banner signs. So in the world of sign ordinance, you can go little, you can also go-
This can be done in-house?
I would highly recommend an outside consultant.
Okay. And then the following ones, I think likely would need consultant. The homestead bike path, recycled water, the new bike plans, these would all need external consultant, right?
Potentially.
Just confirm that. Okay, thank you.
And there are some caveats to that. If I may through the mayor, for example, the homestead bike lane study is a partnership with VTA. So actually, they're meeting tonight as well. They are the lead on that, so there won't be consultant costs, although there'll be a consultant involved, there won't be consultant cost to the city of Cupertino. The VTA will take that lead, and we'll be participating from staff and stakeholder input perspective.
That's really good to know. So the consultant that's working with us will be paid already by VTA. We won't need to pay additional consultant.
And that's a big reason for our recommendation to add it, is because there is not a significant cost to the city.
Okay.
And it's an ongoing project anyway, so whether we're engaged or not, it's going to move forward at this point.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other comments. And let's go. Let's see, where are we? Okay, let's go to the public. Do we know how many people?
Yes, Mayor, yes, I have four requests to speak in community hall, and I see two hands raised virtually. So anyone wishing to speak, please get your cards submitted for this item now or raise your hands on Zoom in the next nine minutes. We'll start with Seema Linskog, followed by Jennifer Sharon, followed by Carol Stanek. Welcome, Seema.
Okay, we'll go with three minutes per speaker.
Hi there. Respected Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I want to start by saying thanks to the staff. You guys have done a really extensive amount of work with lots of details, and a lot of thought clearly has gone into this, so I appreciate that effort. So as we add more stuff to it, I recognize it's a balance, right? There's a lot that goes in and out of it. So that being said, I do want to put in a pitch for a new active transportation plan, a five-year ped and bike plan combined. We have never had one of those. Having two separate plans is confusing, they have confusing priorities, and it's really hard to navigate two plans. They have both expired several years ago, and there are grants we can't get because we don't have an active transportation plan in effect right now. So that is a priority that we hope that you will keep on the priority list. The second one, I think as Vice Mayor Frue mentioned, the complete streets ordinance, I just wanted to clarify for Councilmember Moore, there are no compulsory fixing of streets, just because you touch the street for any reason. It really depends on how you write the complete streets ordinance. So for example, the San Jose ordinance says if you touch a street, you have to evaluate it to see if it makes sense to do anything, if it's wide enough, if it has enough traffic, or it doesn't have too much traffic, if it has pedestrians or not. And you evaluate it based on all those criteria, and then you decide what you can do to make it into more of a complete street to serve the needs of pedestrians, cyclists, and cars. So it's very well-written, the one in San Jose, so I would highly recommend we use that as a starting point for us. The small business revitalization ordinance, we spent a lot of time talking about housing as a city, and our businesses are struggling. The counter just announced its closing. I think, I know we are doing a lot already to help small businesses, but doing something like a small business revitalization ordinance would really show that we support our small businesses in a cohesive, concerted manner, where we bring all of our activities together into one place and make sure that the goal is bigger than the parts. And then streamlining permits for small residential repairs, that's a major pain point for our residents. It's also a potential source of revenue for the city, where a lot of residents are not taking permits because it's too complicated, or they're holding off on doing renovations because they're being asked, like, you know, in my case, I wanted to replace a bathroom fan, I was asked to redo my entire bathroom, you know? Not going to do that, to replace a bathroom fan. So the city just lost that revenue.
Thank you, that was your time. Next speaker is Jennifer Sharon, followed by Carol Stanek, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. I'm speaking tonight as Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and with me, one of my fellow commissioners, as well as another fellow commissioner who will be speaking after me. I was surprised to see on the list of commission-recommended items, though I kind of understand a little bit more now after hearing what the staff had to say, that both the proposals for the work program from the Parks and Rec Commission were not recommended by staff. The first was a recommendation to add to the work program a review of the utilization of the current facilities to determine where the facilities are underutilized, so that we can have increased utilization or potential revenue enhancement. This has the potential to help our city's finances, which of course, since we're in the budget crisis right now, it's something that we all have to think about a lot. The city owns and operates several facilities, which could generate additional revenue if they were more utilized. One example of this is the senior center dance room. It holds scheduled classes at times for seniors, but the rest of the time, it sits empty. And since we know when these classes are going to happen, we could rent it out. And personally, I'm pretty familiar with this as I handle the leases for my church of our rental space. So I know that there is a demand out there for rental space. Having this as a work plan item would not only likely generate additional income, but it would also allow us to have a full assessment of how we're using our facilities and what's available. I know that the staff responded that it happens operationally, but we also know that staff is extremely busy, and sometimes the priorities are a little bit different, so we were encouraging them to move this up in the priority list. Based on our unanimous vote, because it was all the commissioners, aside from one who was absent, I can say that the entire Parks and Rec Commission would like to have this item on the work program. Regarding the second Parks and Rec Commission item, I understand there is a discussion and planning going on regarding streaming and recording of our meetings. Therefore, I trust that the resolution to that one and to those efforts will move us towards our city goal of increasing engagement. So thank you for considering the input of all your commissioners, including our commission, and your work on behalf of Cupertino. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Carol Stanek, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Carol.
Hi, thank you. Carol Stanek, Parks and Rec Commissioner, and I just want to say I fully support what my chair just said. I would add to what she said that, especially on the second item, the one with respect to the virtual streaming, that the commission as it was approved that four to one. It was four with one person not there, and our new commissioner actually happened to mention this the other day at our last meeting and said, why aren't we doing this? So even our new commissioners are very interested in that particular thing. The commission gave strong support to the virtual streaming, recording, remote participation of the Parks and Rec meetings. The commission and council has received broad support from residents to bring back hybrid meetings. I feel this is an issue for equity in our community for those who may not be physically able to attend meetings due to mobility, family, or other issues. I'm delighted that staff notes that this item is currently under review for the possibility of hybrid meetings. Thank you for that. Staff also noted that the reason to put things on the work program is to provide them visibility for trackability for council and to make sure that we see the progress on them. So the good news is that the work's being done. So why not put it on the work program so we have the visibility and we can see it and the commission can weigh in as the progress is being made to the extent that we can add our voices and the public's voices as well before it comes back to council? So that's why I am trying to let you know that there is support for that, and I'd like that to be elevated. Why not? What's the downside of putting it on the work plan? The work is being done. Let's recognize it and appreciate it for what's happening. Thank you.
Carol, just to clarify, are you representing the commission or are you representing yourself?
So the commission was very supportive of that, so I don't know which hat to put on right now, because the commission was supportive of that. We did not have a chance to respond to the staff recommendation, so we did not discuss that the staff didn't recommend this. So in that aspect, I have not discussed that with my fellow commissioner, so whatever is appropriate, feel free.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Jennifer.
Carol has worn many hats successfully in the past. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. Good evening, City Council. Glad to see you all here. I'm interested in this item tonight. I have been attending the other budget meetings and capital improvement. First of all, I'm very, very pleased that the city is working on the license plate readers. If you all don't remember, like, two years ago, at gas station at Prospect Road at the Saratoga-Dianza Boulevard intersection, a elderly couple was held up and had their car stolen. And the Los Altos Police actually caught the perpetrators on Highway 280 because they had license plate readers. I consider that an absolute triumph. Last week, I got off of Highway 17 onto Highway 1, and I heard later that there had been a freeway shooting in Watsonville. That could have been me. A gentleman had his car shot at, and the police had to close Highway 1 in Watsonville for two hours to try to find out where the bullet was. I am a strong believer in license plate readers. Some people may believe them to be an invasion of privacy, but I think in this day and age, I think that they're a good use of our money to keep people safe. I will say that I'm not really a fan of complete streets. You know, they may be good, but a lot of other cities are having problems with them. San Francisco is reversing some of their things that were put in. I think that they're very, very expensive, and believe me now, especially with the housing element coming up and us having, not really knowing where new roads, et cetera, et cetera, new construction are going to be, I really don't want it to be that if you're trying to fix a road or repave it or something like that, that it's going to be a major drama and it's going to cause a lot of money. You know, when we have money, maybe we can do that, but we really don't have money to do that now. I would like to see the homeless job. It doesn't cost that much, and it makes me feel better that we're trying to help someone. I saw a gentleman last week that was jumping in and out of traffic on Stevens Creek Boulevard, and I thought, you know, God bless him, we need to try to help people as much as possible. I also want to make sure that the Bollinger Road project, that we have input from San Jose, from their bike and ped, we have input from San Jose residents, Cupertino residents, Cupertino's bike and ped. My mother-in-law is very scared. She lives in West San Jose by Bollinger, and she's worried emergency vehicles can't get down if we reduce traffic.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Luis Sedadi. And then we'll move to our virtual speakers.
Good evening. I want to thank the staff, City Council, for being here and working for the best for our city. Tonight, I especially want to thank the city staff for all the work and dedication that they put into their excellent detailed work plan. And I know that behind the scenes, the city staff do a lot to make our city safe and functional for us. So thank you for that. A lot of times, city staff is not recognized because people are very aware of, like, the water's not running or the street is flooded, and people don't really say much, and things are going well. So thank you, city staff. Thank you, City Council, even the city lawyer, so there. I want to also give a shout-out to our commissioners that were here tonight. In particular, I'd really like to what Seema Linskog, Commissioner and Planning Commission, Carol Stanek in Parks and Rec, and also, oh my God, I'm blanking out, Jennifer. What is your name? Okay, Jennifer Sharon, Jennifer Sharon, Jennifer Sharon, for being here. And the work that they're trying to do to give good input, even though they're laughing behind me and mocking me. Okay, stop it. And I also want to say, I would like to ask the city to combine the street and bike ped plan, because right now, as it is, it's confusing. It hasn't been updated, they're separated, and it leaves the confusion and difficulty getting funding for it. So if it could be combined, so that we have the complete streets and the bike ped program in a clear plan, that would be wonderful. I also want to put in my pitch, I know that the city has been cutting back on hybrid meetings, but I really would like to have hybrid meetings for the Parks and Rec Commission, especially because there's some issues that are very near and dear to a lot of residents. And I know that Pining will have hybrid, so I'd like to make a pitch for Parks and Rec. And also, finally, I'd like to ask that we don't have license plates readers in Cupertino, because there's not really concrete evidence that there were lower crime in our city, and there are privacy concerns that haven't been addressed.
Thank you, Luis.
Thank you.
And we have two individuals requesting to speak virtually, San Ar and Henry Wijaja. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Sheila and City Council. I would like to remind you that we are in a budget crisis, and listening to this meeting, it would feel like we have unlimited budget at this time. Only recently, residents were told that we would be losing our sidewalk maintenance, our street paving, and our city street trees, which we very much love. And here, we are looking at all of these projects with the appetite as if there was no limit to our budget. I would ask that you please remind yourselves that we are in the middle of a budget crisis, that you have to make deep cuts in these projects. I heard Mayor Sheila say we want to make minor modifications from what was approved last year. I want to say, no, we want to make deep cuts. We did not elect you to just make minor modifications from last year. We elected you to uphold fiscal prudence so that on the long-term basis, our budget is sustainable and pays for things that our mainstream residents need. Reading this list of capital improvement projects in CWP, you would think the city only works for bike lanes and only works for the unhoused and the ELI and BMR projects. What are you doing for mainstream residents, I ask? We need you to work for our mainstream residents and not just these outlier projects that are lofty goals, but really, we don't have the budget and the appetite for. We need to make sure that you're funding things that are for residents. I'll give you one example. That rejected the student internship program because you're running a program for Dianza students. While that is really lofty, I wish to remind you that- lofty, I wish to remind you that you're prioritizing out-of-town and even out-of-country Diazza students over resident students. Why are we doing that? Why are we not giving internships for our local Modest High and Cupertino High students? Similarly, on the speed enforcement and the speed reduction, we do not have a speed reduction issue. We have a speed enforcement issue. I request that you reallocate funding and direction to law enforcement to ensure that there is traffic enforcement as opposed to more consultant projects that will reduce speed. And finally, I ask that you please place a moratorium on any further consultant projects. If you need more consultant spend, let us not take on that project. We do not have the appetite for more hundreds of thousands of dollars to be paid to consultants. If there are projects that staff can do in-house, we should do that. Otherwise, we should pass. And I do want to finally say that of all of the projects, the license plate reader is one we absolutely would like to see. Theft is out of control in the neighborhoods. We continue to see reports of next door every day. Detail theft is out of control and we need you to spend where we care, and that is reducing crime in Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And our final speaker with their hand raised before the nine-minute cutoff is Ariane Doshi. Welcome, Henri Wijaja. Welcome, Henri.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. First thing I want to say is that honestly, I think the work program sufficiently supports students. I want to contradict what the last speaker said. Speaking as a student of Cupertino High School, I think it's very sufficient in terms of internships. And it's providing good opportunities to Diazza students. However, I do want to make one note that the council does need to keep the combined bike ped plan or the complete streets plan. Your guys' choice. But the reasons, there's a bunch of reasons. It's because the current plans are out of date and the bike plan is already like eight years old. The two current plans, they have competing priorities and it leads to a lot of confusion. So, they need to be combined into a new plan. The old plans don't really consider the other city-approved plans such as the climate action plan, ENR master plan, new traffic patterns due to COVID, and especially with new construction being planned in the rise. And recently, studies such as the LRSP and the Vision Zero give general guidance, but they don't really give specifics. During the presentations, they didn't really give or delve into super, super specific details. They just gave a general, here's a bunch of information, do something with it. So, the transportation plan is where a specific project detail is on in Cupertino. So, again, keeping the combined bike ped plan or the complete streets plan is really, really necessary right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. And Mayor, no further speakers for this item?
I put in a speaker card.
Yes, I believe you put in a speaker card for oral communications. Mayor, he's speaking later in the regular meeting, in the regular business items. So, we have no further speakers for this item, Mayor.
All right. So, he will get to speak in the oral communications. Okay, so, let's bring it back to council. Since we've heard the public comments, and thank you to those of you who made your comments this evening. Let's start, let's go with a motion and then for discussion purposes. And I would look to someone to make a motion incorporating some of the items we talked about. And then we can go forward with the discussion after we make the motion. Is there anyone brave enough to make a motion? Okay, Vice Mayor Frue.
Okay, so I do have a motion, but let me send it to the clerk first and we can go from there.
Should we wait for the motion?
Unless someone else wants to make one first.
Councilmember Moore, did you want to talk, speak before you look at the motion or did you want to wait? It's your choice.
I have a clarifying question which might inform the motion. Is there any difference in cost to the city since you are looking at the hybrid meetings, whether it was added to the list or not? It seems like we're already doing that.
Yeah. Simple answer is no. So, the hybrid meeting discussion will come back to council in the next month or two or so. It's already on the current work program. So, we can continue to add it on with no additional cost to it. And it will be coming back to council relatively soon.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm sorry, but it's not, is it, I should ask, actually on this list presently?
Yeah, that particular item is an operational work item that we're on right now. I would expect it to be implemented very, very soon. So, it may be, you know, if we're adopting the work program with the budget in May slash June, it may be something that's sort of down that path already before the work program even gets back to council. I think we're moving forward at a pretty aggressive clip on that effort.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow, five minutes, please.
So, I'd like to first make a comment. And I'd like to thank the staff for improving this process. I remember when I first started on the council at the time, the commissioners wasn't involved with the creation of work program. And I and DRC had several, formed the subcommittee and tried to improve the engagement of commissions. As a result, then we introduced a process to allow commissions to propose items. So, I am really glad that the commissions are so engaged in this process. But that said, since the council adopted a two-year program, I was surprised that commissions were encouraged this year to propose items because the council wasn't even given a chance to propose items or have a discussion. Because usually, this was done during goal setting in end of January. But because we had a two-year program, I thought that's why we didn't have that. So, some of these proposals, I thought it's really great, but I really hope that we should have, maybe this is a better timing that commission proposed it, then when the council do a goal setting in January for next year, we have all these items to consider together with any other community or council-proposed items. So, yeah, thank you for that. And also, I'd like to thank the staff. I think I made a recommendation in 2019 to provide an unfunded list of projects because often the council will only given a list of that, the staff proposed a CIP project for that year. I requested that. And at the time, I think Tim Borden provided the list. And then the staff has continued to provide that list because I find that we have done a lot of studies. They all propose projects, but we never see them. Even the commissioners do not see them. So, it's good that now we have a good list of all these projects that we have to look forward to. We just need to plan. Thank you for helping to improve the process.
Thank you. You have two, two and a half minutes left.
Sorry. So, I, again, I'll reserve my time for the entire time in case I forget to say.
Councilmember Moore, five minutes, please.
Okay. Thank you. I really appreciate the comments from Councilmember Chow regarding the council not being asked about adding new projects. I did during the previous council meeting request that we would revisit the green certification program, which the city, I believe, implemented in 2010. We actually certified businesses throughout the city. And I did want to see that artificial turf would be addressed, whether or not we were going to ban that because we have the ability to do that now. And that we would look into for this certification, whether or not a business was using certain herbicides and pesticides and/or organic fertilizers or not, that I thought that could be incorporated into that program. So, if you're unfamiliar with the green certification program in Cupertino for members of the public, you can go look on the webpage and see what it takes in order to become certified and have that as a kind of like a gold star for your business. Thank you.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, are we going to see the?
Yes, Mayor, I will share my screen right now. Okay, it should appear momentarily.
Would you like to read it, Vice Mayor Frue?
Sure. So, my motion is that council would approve the staff recommendation with the following adjustment, that we incorporate the Planning Commission recommended action, item 14, complete streets ordinance, and the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission recommended action, item three, active transportation plan into the new bicycle pedestrian plan and/or the Vision Zero plan as applicable.
Okay. Any discussions on the motion? And if you could just, if you could just leave it on the screen, that would be.
Mayor, would you like to request a second for the motion?
Oh, is there a second for the motion? Thank you, Councilmember Way. So, there's a motion and there's a second. All right. Any further discussion? Councilmember Moore and then Councilmember Way.
Yes, I would like to clarify this motion. Is this including all of the new proposed projects? Looks, yeah, I would want to see the complete list of what's being added on, if that is within the staff recommendation. For instance, is that including art and public and private areas, speed limit lowering, homestead bike lane study, et cetera?
No, it's very specific. So, in the staff report, in Attachment B, there's a list of all commission proposals. And you will find item three, which is there listed as the recommendation from the bike ped commission. You will also see item 14, a recommendation from the planning commission. And they're incorporated into otherwise ongoing projects so that there's clear direction to staff to include those items. Otherwise, it is the staff recommendation.
Okay. And then to clarify through anyone from staff, so we've got the unfunded projects on hold. Sorry, I can't recall what the recommended action was because we had items 27 through 35 with some of them, you recommended that they stay on hold. So, I want to know which ones through there, if any of those are moving through the gate or not.
So, the staff recommendation is Attachment C, which is a full list of projects that are in progress, we recommend continuing, and then the additional projects. And we'll get that, if video would share our screen at the table here, we'll get that list up really quick and then get back to the motion. And then the motion would add the two items that the vice mayor Frue has identified.
So, yes, you are adding 12 through 20 and you're suggesting adding three and I think it was 14. What was the other one? Yeah, three and 14.
That's correct.
Of the other plan. Okay. So, so that everyone understands, so one of them, for instance, is the recycled water feasibility study, which would lead to a project ballpark figures, 20 million on the low end, well over 30 million on the other end, if you're looking at doing onsite tertiary treatment at Blackberry Farm. And where would that even potentially be built? And the other would be to extend the purple pipe, two and a half miles, low estimate, 32 million from a couple of years ago dollars. So, it could be even higher to go that two and a half miles from the northwest corner of Apple headquarters, all the way across the city, and then all the trenching. So, that's a significant amount of money to have that even go through the gate. And do you have any kind of ballpark figure for what that feasibility study would cost? And I'm going to assume that's going to have to be contracted out.
Yeah, we would do a contracted feasibility study and, as mentioned, bring that back to the council for consideration through the budget process for your evaluation.
Okay. So, at this time, I don't see where we're going to have the 20 to well over 30 million dollars in order to do this, to irrigate the golf course. So, rather than do the full study, is there some kind of a, some sort of smaller study that you could do to kind of let us know before you commit to a few hundred thousand dollars for this study? Is there something that can be done in-house that isn't going to cost as much so we can get a sense that this is even possible? And then with regards to any potential financing, what could happen? Because, you know, as we look forward through this particular agenda item, we've got over 80 million dollars we're looking at for one single project. And then we have the CD TFA audit to deal with. So, I'm really concerned about this particular one.
Acknowledging your concern about funds, and I think we have similar concerns, what we can do is look at a very concise or abbreviated feasibility study, really to give us sort of back-of-napkin type numbers, something that we can justify as either starting the project or not starting the project. And we could bring you that level of a feasibility study for funding. We need to talk to some consultants about what that might cost us and what seems reasonable enough to get us into your next decision-making point.
Okay. Does that, would that need to be articulated in the motion, that it's going to be kind of an abbreviated study? Because there's also, if you're trying to do onsite treatment on Blackberry Farm Golf Course, that's, you're trying to make a sewage treatment plant on the golf course.
The moving parts include assistance, for example, from the sanitation district. There's a lot of recycled water dollars available in terms of grants. So, we would need to do a little bit of assessment in terms of what the cost to the city might be. But yes, we would, I think we hear you, unless there's an objection from the council as a whole, we would bring back a very cost-efficient feasibility study.
And I'd want to know how much space it would need to take up as well, and how much, what's your gallons per day you're trying to end up achieving? Okay, thank you.
Understood.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. We didn't really track the time, so you went a little over. Councilmember Way, five minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. So, I want to go back to the basics. These proposals, work plans that the staff proposed, if I understand it correctly, we did go through the briefing, that a lot of them have potential to get grants. And so, that these are a lot of, yes, eventually, if we want to do all, every project is going to cost more than 80 million dollars. But right now, the process is to really put studies and put feasibilities in place so that we, actually the council, knows which one to move forward in the future. But right now, all these plans will come back in May with a proposed budget.
That's correct.
Okay. So, it really, we're not deciding we're going to do the Blackberry Farm or the purple pipes. We're looking at how much any project would cost to do it. And in May, we have another chance to look all of them according to the possibilities and the researches and also the amount that the council would like to deviate, that in May, we can really look at the project and reconsider everything.
Yes.
Okay, great. If I understood correctly, I talked to Congressman Anna Issue Law, too. There are a lot of money out there to apply. So, I really appreciate the staff really look at projects that we have potential, that we can bring money into our city to do really good, you know, sustainability project or project that's going forward. So, I appreciate that. That approach is really a good approach. Thank you. I have.
You have three minutes.
Two minutes. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow?
I have a question and then I'd like to propose a substitute motion. First, the question is, we are in the process of adopting housing element draft. The last draft I read, we have promised, there are a lot of things we have to do within six months, maybe some we need to do within a year. So, once we adopt housing element, does that mean we would have to add some items in order to implement it within the timeline required?
In terms of add items to the city work program?
Yeah.
Not necessarily. So, CDD will take that as part of their operation.
But a lot of these are policy matters. So, you need to adopt ordinance, you, shouldn't those be one of the work program items at least?
Not necessarily. So, the housing element, assuming it's certified by the state and also approved by the city council, those are the policies that council has already approved for. those are the policies that council has already approved for, for staff to implement.
Yes, but the draft also promised a lot of things that have to be implemented by adopting ordinances.
That's the implementation.
Cannot, no, ordinances cannot be adopted by staff. It has to be adopted by the council.
Correct.
Because that's policy decision. Okay, so here is my motion then. Okay, let me share my screen.
You could send it to, you could send it to the city clerk, that would be good. Councilmember Chow?
Actually, the, the text from City Clerk is very hard to read. It might be more readable here. I'll send it later. Okay, here's my motion. In addition to the continuing, to continue with the remaining, sorry for the, to continue the remaining 11 items from the current fiscal year 23, 25 work program that the staff recommended, consider the ones, the additional ones below that can be done in-house. So that would mean add seven items, maybe eight, sorry. I'll, I'll count that later. So adding these items that would not require additional consultant at this time, since we are still in the middle of cutting budget. So that's the poet lower rate. The speed limit reduction, I know that, I read that up. It was adopted in 2011. It requires the city to do a 10-year study to set speed limit at 85% of the current speed. And we are 2024, so it's about time. And I, I hope that does not need, does that need their consultant? Anyway, and then the poet lower rate and the sign ordinance, but I'd like to reduce the scope so that it can be done in-house. Don't go and do a big project. And the rise engagement. And also, I think it's a good idea to put the hybrid meeting support on the agenda to continue. I think we probably need to certainly adjustments around next year on what makes sense for each of the commission. And maybe for some commission, it could be just audio recording or video recording or hybrid. And also, I'd like to see an item that's an implementation of the housing element, because we will have to implement them and we will have to adopt ordinances through, along the way. So that's what makes sense. Five, six, seven, eight, that's already eight. That's eight items in addition of the, or 11 items from the two-year work program. And that's 19 items. And this year, we have completed 15 items. So this 19 is already four more than we had accomplished this year. So that's my motion. And then also, I'll put the ones that need external consultants for consideration next year during the council goal-setting time. These are all good ideas, I think they are things we have to do. But then maybe they are not that urgent this year, as these items cannot be done in-house. Yeah, so these are the motion. Okay, thank you.
I, I wanted to make a couple of comments. Oh, is there a second for your substitute motion?
Through, through the mayor, I'm not, I'm not seeing item 16 being addressed. And 16 electrification, there was a, a ruling. So this actually is something we need to be looking at.
I think that also require consultant from, according to staff. So I'm adding that as for next year.
So I'll second that for, for purposes of this discussion. However, I, I will indicate that I prefer the original motion, except the longer I think about having this sewage treatment plant in the floodplain at Blackberry Farm, more concerned I am about, about that. And that how much time that we want to actually have spent on trying to figure that out. So I, I want to make sure that we aren't committing ourselves to a, to a huge project on that and that we might, one solution might end up ultimately being better than the other. I don't know if I, you know, I, I'm trying to understand if I, if, about the direction, if we need to direct that way or is that it's understood that there are, there are potential serious pitfalls with having that type of a treatment plant at that facility? I'm assuming that that is the thinking and that I think the public would like to know that because, you know, sometimes there's odors from these facilities. And there's, it's more than just, it's going to take up space. It's going to take up part of potentially the golf course. Where is the safe place to locate it? There's a number of questions. So I want to make sure that that, we don't go too far down that road, spend too much money on that with, if there's, if it's really a no-go. Okay, thank you.
Just to get this discussion back on track, we are looking at the two-year work program. We have projects which have been completed as of today. We have projects which are estimated to be completed by the end of the fiscal year. Then some projects to be completed towards, by the end of the calendar year. And the assumption is, funding is in, is in place for all these items, the, the ones that will be, or estimated to be completed in December, in December 2024. So if you're looking at adding unfunded projects back to the, the city work program, I'm not sure, this is the time where we are discussing funding, because we, we really don't know. These are unfunded projects, and we don't really have a good sense of how much it costs. So, and my assumption is that when we come back during budget, will we discuss the unfunded projects at that time? With, given the assumption that the funded projects all the way up to December 2024 are in place. So there's, there's no confusion there.
So with respect to the unfunded projects, the, the projects that are on the list now, we're recommending a number of those move forward for various reasons, the priority, the amount of discussion we've had on them. So those are the ones we would put costing to over the next month or so, so that you can, you can review them at the budget, through the budget process. Should you decide at that point to move forward with them, we would, we would work on them over the course of the next fiscal year or more, depending on the project towards completion. So that, that would be the plan. And if there are other projects, that, several that we, we don't recommend moving forward, we would continue to track those and bring, bring them back to you in February timeframe for next year, when we do a full reset of the work program.
Okay. That, I think, makes sense. So my suggestion to the council is, what are we adding back from the unfunded projects? And the ones that the commission has recommended, which staff did not recommend? So really, those are the two categories that we should be looking at, unless you've come up with something completely new.
May I just do a quick time check? We have about 10 minutes before we wrap up this portion.
Okay.
And, and there are, there are two motions on the table as well, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Should we go back to the substitute motion and vote? Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. Councilmember Way?
Through the mayor, would you give me one minute?
Yes, I will give you one minute.
Councilmember Chow, can you pull you back your proposal? I couldn't see it. I, I just want to confirm two things on your proposal. I know you're concerned about it. I want to confirm with city manager and staff that those are being taken care of. The hybrid meeting, and as I understand, is in progress already, and we will be seeing it pretty soon. So I, I don't think it's necessary to put it on the program, right?
That is correct.
Again, implementing of housing element, that is already going to be on the agenda, and we are going to look at it. And it's a lot of work that already being done, will be done in the, I, I don't think it's a work plan. It's a progress we have to do.
It, it's city operation. So ordinance that needs to be introduced and also adopted, that would definitely come to council.
Right, so it's not, we don't need to be a work plan. I, I know Councilmember Chow is concerned with this too. I just want to make sure that even we don't include it, it's moving forward. Right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Chow. One minute, please.
Okay, as, as mentioned by the staff, sometimes items are, were put on the work program for visibility. I think for hybrid meeting and the housing element implementation, it is necessary to put that on the council, especially the council will have to adopt those ordinances that, along the way. And some things I for, I put in my note but forgot to mention that I second the memo on green certification program that was adopted in 2010. And I would like to know how is it going? Do we need to update that? And the others mentioned, like the BMR expiring, units that's expiring, what we can do about it? And yeah, so I suppose the staff is taking notes. I second those requests for off agenda reports. So that doesn't need to be included in the motion, yeah?
Okay, Councilmember Moore, one minute, please.
Okay, thank you. So I do appreciate the, having the hybrid item put on the, put on the work program, even if it's still, it's, it's being implemented. And I think it supports the requests that we've been getting from many, many people in order to continue those. And I know that I've really appreciated the, the prior ones, going all the way back to 2005, watching them for various issues and to be able to see who is actually coming to speak. Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's, let's try and wrap this up. There's a substitute motion from Councilmember Chow, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Can we, do we have a good understanding of what the substitute motion is? If yes, let's vote by lights.
Substitute motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
Okay, let's go back to our original motion. And if we could, if we could see that on the screen, please, Madam City Clerk. And if there's something we would want to add to this, very brief, we could do so, and we can take it from there. And I was going to ask one thing, since I did point out that the, the minor, the planning commissions, how did they say that? Streamlining, simplifying the permits. And as well as the, if that could be added on, does it need to be in a motion? Or is it?
I, I would definitely provide that memo to council in a timely manner, so I would propose not to include it in a motion.
Not to include, great. And, and the housing jobs was going to be taken care of? Again, does, needs to be included in a motion or not?
We will do some outreach and report back to council on the status.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else? Should we vote on this, which is to incorporate the Planning Commission Recommended Item Number 14 by Bike Ped Commission Recommended Item Number Three, and incorporate them into the new Bike Ped Pedestrian Plan or the Vision Zero Plan if applicable, as applicable?
Okay. Mayor, may I propose a friendly amendment?
Okay, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to propose that we add the hybrid meeting, as I stated, on the work program and the implementation of housing element. I think the staff has pointed out it's operational, they are working on it. It doesn't add any staff work to put on the work program, but it does add visibility. Hybrid meeting was on the work program the year prior to this, and it has since been operational, it hasn't worked out. Therefore, it needs visibility.
I think we just heard from the city manager, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the hybrid issue is going, coming before the city council produces.
It hasn't worked out as an operational item, yes. So I'm proposing amendment.
Mayor, we, so we have, so I, that's, I think was a proposal for a friendly amendment. Vice Mayor Fruen is the movement. I believe Councilmember Way suggested it. So I would, I would suggest that you ask Vice Mayor Fruen if he would accept the amendment.
I will, I will decline the friendly amendment.
Okay, okay. So I think we should be wrapping this up. One last comment from you, Councilmember Moore, and then we'll vote on the motion.
Thank you. I hope staff's able to incorporate 3, 14, and 20, the new Bike Ped Plan, because there's some, some of the language is pretty similar between what we already had, moving forward for 20. Update the current bike and pedestrian plans, combine them into a, to create a comprehensive active transportation plan. Consider complete street concepts to enhance the interface between active transportation improvements and public and private transportation systems. So we already have that as 20, and we're adding 3 and 14. So we'll need to kind of swirl those, swirl those together. Thank you.
Okay, so we can go with the motion as, as, as we're seeing on the screen. And let's vote by lights, please.
The substitute motion carries with Chow voting no.
Thank you very much, and let's take a five-minute recess. Yeah, thank you.